I'd say good evening to everyone that's here, those that are Facebook or YouTube. Welcome to our first meeting of the new year, January the 10th, 2023. Lightly pray that all that had a good Christmas and Happy New Year. We have our invocation by Mr. Terry Locklear.
Dear Lord, as we gather here today on the school board, we ask for your guidance and wisdom. Help us make decisions that are fair, just, and in the best interest of our students and community. We pray that you would give us the strength and courage to lead with integrity and passion, always striving to do what's right and just. We also pray for our students and teachers, everybody associated with our school system, that they would be protected and blessed as they pursue their education and professional growth. And then as always, everything that's accomplished will always give you the praise and glory for it all. In Christ Jesus' name we pray, amen.
Thank you. Before we go any further, we have two new members added to our cabinet. We'll start off with Dr. Cor. She's been named our new associate superintendent, I'm sorry. Do you have anything you want to share with us?
For the opportunity, I really appreciate it. And I appreciate continuing serving the district as we turn around and see all these improvements as we move forward.
And we also have our new board attorney, Mr. Richard Schwartz.
Okay. Thank you very much. Delighted to be here, looking forward to working with everyone. We've had a lot of meetings last week and met with a lot of your folks. And the fire hose is open. Felt like I was drinking from it. But we've got a lot going on and very excited to be working with you and excited that this is my first board meeting. And in case she's watching, a shout out, happy birthday to my wife. And I hope she's still my wife by the time I get home, given that it's her birthday.
Thank you. We also have Mr. Henry, he's here by our phone. Next one, Adam on agenda is the...
Mr. Chair, before we move on, I know. Any update on Mike Smith? I think it's crazy that you...
Yes, I did visit Mike last week. And I will say he still has some issues with talking, but he is eating now, as we would say normal. And he's, I'm gonna say, in my opinion, gaining weight. And he's moving around. They said he was walking. It would be probably as far as from here past the road outside and back. And he's able to do that unassisted. So again, he still seems to be improving. And actually, my understanding, he went to one of the shootout games at Red Springs. He didn't get to stay long, but he did go to one of the shootout, I think the first round shootout game at Red Springs. He went there and stayed a little while. And I will say this, just, you know, the communication, the way you communicate with him. I think I've said it before, folks, if you can take five minutes or 10 minutes and go by and see him, he's excited when somebody comes in. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Craig. Next item is the adopt little agenda. Mr. Terry, yeah.
I make a motion that we add the following as an information item. A discussion about the stakeholders that are being included in the decision-making process for the technology high school. In other words, so what is our plan for ensuring that all voices are heard? And before we vote on this, whether or not we want to add it to the agenda, let me be clear. I'm asking this question because this school is not mine, it's not yours, it's the people's. It belongs to them. And as a representative, sometimes it's not good enough for me to just know things. Sometimes these things need to be brought out, you know, in these types of discussions. And our constituents need to hear from us. That's why it needs to be discussed in an open session. And there's no reason for us not to talk about this today, no advance notice is needed. It's just a simple discussion. And quite frankly, we should have talked about this months ago. Let me make this motion again, I'm happy to repeat it. I want us to all be clear. I make a motion that we add the following to the agenda as an information item. A discussion just regarding what stakeholders are being included in the decision-making process for the design of the technology high school. Thank you.
Got a motion by Mr. Terry to amend the agenda. Is there a second?
Mr. Chair, hopefully we can answer that, and we have already. But our next construction meeting would be an opportunity. And Bobby, we're gonna need to schedule that because we do have some final drawings. And the answer to the question is that we are working. We have included some stakeholders in terms of that. But if we can answer all those questions, because again, we do need to schedule another construction meeting since we do have some final drawings, correct?
So yes, Chairman Sims, yes. We do have final schematic drawings that have been submitted to DPI. And we also were provided this week with a budget estimate as well. So we are in the process of bringing those updates to the construction committee whenever we schedule our next meeting.
Mr. Terry, I'm sorry. Okay, well, he had his hand up before I'm gonna come back to you. Mr. Terry made a motion to add that to the agenda. Need a second or...
You have a motion? I'm sorry, you have a motion that was made to approve the agenda that did not get a second before Mr. Locklear made a motion to amend the agenda. And neither one of the motions has a second.
Point of clarity, Mr. Terry, Mr. Chair. What is it? Tell me in plain English what you're talking about. I'm not quite sure I'm with you. You're saying stakeholders, stakeholders for what? Stakeholders to determine the curriculum? Stakeholders to determine the measurement of the building? Stakeholders to do what?
When I talk about stakeholders, I'm talking about our... In this county, if I'm a legislator in Washington DC or in Raleigh, and I send money to this county, if I vote to send money to this county for education, I'm gonna want to know how this money is being used to enhance the opportunities here in the public schools, the community college, and the university. So how are we working together with these, with our stakeholders to include them in on the conversations to inform the design of this building? Because sometimes the curriculum is gonna guide the design. Or how are we working with our Office of Economic Development? As a technology high school, in my mind, it seems like this, the purpose of this, one of the major purposes of this facility is to ensure that these individuals have jobs. So are we working with the Economic Development Office on ensuring that the program is right? That we're offering, the curriculum that we're offering, our programs are right for the future? And how can that inform the design of the facility?
If I may, please. According to our attorney, we need a second on approval of the agenda. So let's handle that business if we can, please.
We had a motion to approve the adoption of the agenda by Mr. Gentry. Mr. Randy?
I second the motion.
Have a second by Mr. Randy. All in favor by saying aye. Motion passed. Approval of the minutes, I'm sorry.
The motion to approve the agenda passed. The motion to amend the agenda failed for lack of a second.
Okay. Next item on the agenda is approval of, I'm sorry, Ocean, you had a question? Hit your mic.
Question was actually in regards to what Mr. Terry was saying. Because as Ms., as Dr. Emanuel stated, I was trying to get clarity on, I mean, at this point in the stage of building this technology high school, the stakeholders in question such as like economic development wouldn't really, they don't seem to be relevant in this, in schematics right now. I could see bringing them in at a time when we have an actual building and need their input as to, you know, what areas are in demand in the workforce. But as of right now, like as in the design of the building, only the, only our staff and the people that are trained with our students, I feel, would need to be involved, as they are now.
Mr. Chair, if I may, just to recap where we are in terms, we have met with economic development, it was part of that original planning meeting. If you remember, phase one of the new career center, we're just moving those programs that's already in existence at the career center to the new career center. Phase two is when we really have additional conversation with additional stakeholders. Because phase two, Bobby, is where we involve industry, economic developer in terms of labs and industry that wanna come in and so help us with that.
So that is correct, Dr. Williamson. In phase one, we've incorporated all of our programs from our current career center. With the addition of food services is one new program that we have. Phase two incorporates our two industrial labs. And also our two new programs that we have there are Megatronics labs. And those would reinforce the industry relations that are in the district right now. So more of the community economic development would be that conversation that we would have in phase two construction.
I'd just like to add, as far as construction, is that the construction committee did not meet on this, but engineers, architects, Mr. Bobby, we had a meeting, Mr. Craig was on there, John was there, I came over here. And all those things are moving along to put the building in perspective. And that's, I mean, that's basically where we're at, at that step. So, I mean, but construction can meet whenever everybody wants to.
Okay, go on. I'm sorry, I mean...
And as far as the curriculum, you know, we met with Mr. Herman and everything with that. And it was based on the number of students we have already in the program and how many students we perceive, the size of the building and all. So those things were taken into consideration in determining the curriculum that would be offered.
Mr. Chair. If I'm not out of order, Mr. Terry, the management at CTE, I was part of that meeting that Mr. Lawson was talking about. They incorporated dimensions and size and relevance to, like Dr. Emanuel said, in accordance to numbers and expectations and the ideology that affect that we could make these classrooms somewhat, we can increase them or decrease them by dividers. So the building's gonna be state of the art and all that was taken into consideration, but it was done by management from CTE.
Okay, last question, then we're gonna move on.
I don't have a question, I'm gonna make a motion to approve the minutes.
I have a motion to approve the minutes by Mr. Lawson. Second by Mr. Leach, all in favor, saying aye. All opposed? Information items, school board appreciation month, Dr. Williamson.
Good evening, board members. January is school board appreciation month. Our school board members are committed to leading our district as we push forward, improve and continue our mission to provide a quality and equitable education for all students. This month, we commend them, we commend you and thank you for your leadership, courage in the face of challenges, bravery in making the tough decisions, and your unwavering dedication to the students and staff members of the public schools of Robson County. So now I'd like to take a moment to recognize each board member and the districts you represent. Please, when I call your name, will you come up here and meet Dr. Williamson? Okay. Board Chairman John Simmons for District One. And let's give him a hand as he comes up. All right. District Two, Melissa Ocean. Let's give her a hand. District Three, Dr. Linda Emanuel. District Four, Terry Locklear. District Five, Craig Lowery. And let's take a moment, let's give Mr. Mike Smith from District Six a round of applause. And we have District Seven, Board Vice Chairman Randy Lawson. District Eight, Trey Britt. At-large Member William Gentry. At-large Member Vontae Leach. And Mr. Henry, we didn't skip you, at-large Henry Brewer. Let's give him a hand. Thank you, Mr. Brewer.
Thank you.
So please join me in applauding all of our board members for their service and dedication to the public schools of Robson County. Board members, each of you make more of a difference than you'll ever know. Thank you for all you do.
So let's get pictures again. On behalf of all of our employees, our students, and on the county of Robson, thank you so much for your dedicated service, your time as we transform, turn around this district. We cannot do it without your work and your support. I remind board members all the time the importance of being in this room in monthly meetings and the decisions that you make for our kids. So again, thank you so, so very much. Let's get some pictures.
Next item is the Leandro case update. Mr. Dubus?
Good evening. My name is Melanie Dubus, and I'm with the law firm of Parker Poe Adams and Bernstein. I'm here this evening with my colleague Alexandria Hill, or Alex Hill. And we want to give you guys an update on the Leandro case. You've probably heard recently, starting in November in the news, there've been some updates. And first and foremost, I will say to you all as board members, see if I can make this work. Here we go. Congratulations, is what I would say to you as board members. You've won again in this Leandro litigation. In November, the Supreme Court, for the third time, confirmed the students, every student's right to the opportunity for a sound basic education. And in ruling so, declared public education is a public good. And I know I don't have to explain that to any of you all, as you were just recognized here this evening. So the case has been pending since 1994. May of 1994 is when it was filed, and Robson County was one of the original plaintiffs to the case. The case is based on the language of the North Carolina Constitution. We are special in North Carolina in that we hold education in very, very high regard. And our constitution states that people have the right to the privilege of education, that it's the duty of the state to guard and maintain that right, and that the General Assembly shall provide for a general and uniform system of public schools. And so the claim back then was the reliance on local money was such that in districts, in rural districts, in low-wealth districts, the children did not have that opportunity and that it was the responsibility of the state of North Carolina to make that minimum opportunity available to all children. So the case went up to the Supreme Court first in 1997, and that's when the court ruled that the language in the constitution means that children have the right to a sound, basic education. That education is one that will enable students to compete and to succeed in a rapidly changing global environment. So it's a definition that sort of stands the test of time. The case was remanded in 1997 to trial in front of Judge Howard Manning. He tried the case and focused on Hope County, but there was evidence presented regarding statewide, test scores statewide, graduation rates, college admission rates. And Judge Manning concluded that the state was in fact failing to ensure that the opportunity for sound, basic education was available to all students. So the case then went back to the Supreme Court. And the Supreme Court, in a unanimous opinion, affirmed Judge Manning's rulings and added a little more clarity to what a sound, basic education is. A sound, basic education requires that every classroom be staffed with a well-trained, competent teacher. Every school be led by a well-trained, competent principal. And that every school is provided the resources that are necessary to provide all the children, including at-risk children, the opportunity to have a sound, basic education. And importantly, in this decision in 2004, the Supreme Court also made it very clear, it is the state's obligation, and the state cannot abdicate. Its obligation cannot be abdicating, but by transferring responsibility to local boards of education. Now, the state certainly can and has delegated to you all the authority to run the school system. And obviously, y'all are doing that really well. But when it comes to providing the resources, providing the funding, the state can't shrug its shoulders and say, ah, you know, if Dr. Williamson were watching his pennies a little closer, things would be better. It's the state's responsibility. And so initially, Dr. Emanuel and I were talking about this earlier this evening. The first five years after the Leandro two decision, actually were pretty well. That's when the DSSF, the disadvantaged student supplemental funding, was created. Robson was one of the first counties in a pilot program. We, every district applied for how they would spend that funding. And initially in 2004, that was $67.5 million. That's grown since then, and every district now receives some amount of DSSF funding. There are also other programs that were expanded. Teacher salary was increased at that time. So for those first five years, the Leandro case from 2004 to 2009 resulted in at least a billion dollars of additional educational spending. But then we know what happened the next five years, 2010 to 2015. Those of you who were on the board and or in education at the time recall, those were tough times in terms of laying off teaching assistants, programs being cut, allocations being cut, textbook funding being cut, principal training programs being completely eliminated, and some teacher training programs being completely eliminated. And at the end of that time period, 2015, even though the economy was starting to improve, the reality in North Carolina was that we had more at-risk children and we had fewer resources from the state to provide an education to those at-risk children. And low-wealth districts were hit particularly hard. And so at that point, we filed a motion with Judge Manning, and we said, you know, we've been at this judge a long time, and we think the state needs to come forward with a specific and a comprehensive plan for what it's gonna do to provide a sound, basic education. So this slide, I think, is having technical difficulties. But in, from 2015 to 2021, we embarked on a process, starting with Judge Manning, and then when he retired, with Judge David Lee, where ultimately Judge Lee said, you know, we have given deference, we have given deference for a long time to the executive branch, to the legislative branch, to come up with a plan. And the Supreme Court told us, told the court, you should give deference to the other branches initially at least. But at this point, by the time we were into the late teens, twenties, the trial court, again, first Judge Manning and then Judge Lee continuing, decided that the court's role now to step in and get more involved in a plan to... that the court's role now to step in and get more involved in a plan to remedy the constitutional violation. And so we actually ended up working with the administration, working with Governor Cooper's administration, his education advisors, with DPI, and with the state school board members. And we all actually ended up agreeing amongst ourselves that, given, you know, the state of education funding and the growth in North Carolina and the needs of the children, that the state was still in violation of the constitution. And we came up with a plan, working with an outside consultant. Judge Lee decided that, you know, the plaintiffs are the poorest school districts in the state, and DPI's resources have been cut, and we haven't come up with something yet. So why, so he wanted an outside expert to help formulate a plan based on their expertise and based on the time that they spent in North Carolina interviewing folks. Dr. Williamson spoke with them, some of his cabinet likely spoke with them. And they recommended a plan that the parties, plaintiffs, the executive branch, and the state board of education, we all agreed on. And that was ordered, oops, wrong way. That was ordered to be entered. Sorry. Again, apologies for the technical difficulties that we're having here. Okay. So Judge Lee ordered the state, you've got this plan. You should go ahead and execute it, and I want progress reports. And this summer of 2021, the legislature was meeting, and the state's lawyers came back and said, Judge Lee, there's proposed budgets, but there's not a budget yet. And so the plan, the steps of the plan have not yet been funded, and we hope it will be. Came back in September, and Judge Lee found that there still wasn't a budget, but the state had available resources at that time to fund at least years two and three of the comprehensive remedial plan. Said adhered for October that summer. And then in November, he entered the order, and this is the order that ultimately was affirmed by the Supreme Court recently. He ordered the state to, ordered the executive branch, and state actors within the executive branch, to go ahead and transfer the funds. Judge Lee said, there's a surplus of funds, the funds are available. Nobody disputes that. We have a plan. It's been put together by experts to see what the steps would cost. And he ordered the state to transfer that money first to DPI, then to go down to the districts. Some of it's going to DHS for early childhood, and then some to the university system to re-implement some of those training programs that had been cut earlier during the regular session. And that is the order that ended up in front of, back again, in front of the Supreme Court, resulting in the November Supreme Court order. So the Supreme Court said, this is important enough, we're going to bypass the court appeals, take this up directly. And as I said, at this point, the plaintiffs, the state of North Carolina, the state board, we are all sort of on the same page. However, Linda Combs, who was then the controller of the state of North Carolina intervened in the case and asked the court of appeals to prohibit the plan from going forward. And Senator Berger and Representative Moore intervened in the case and asked the Supreme Court to overturn Judge Lee's order. However, the Supreme Court, in a split decision, albeit, but the Supreme Court ruled in our favor, in your favor, on November 10th, and remanded the case to, back to the trial court because since the order was entered in November of 2001, there've been some changes, right? A budget was ultimately passed, there were some tweaks to it last summer. So remanded to the trial court just to do the math essentially as to of the plan, once the budget was, the 2021 budget was passed, how much has been funded? How much is left to be funded? And this is just some of the, an example of some of the action steps that are in the plan. And we'll see that they follow very closely those three elements that first Judge Manning laid out, and then the Supreme Court confirmed. To have a sound, basic education and to have a constitutional education. We need teachers, and these are some specific action steps, to hire and retain teachers. And we need well-prepared principals in every school, and a financial system that provides adequate resources. So again, these are some of the specific action items in years two. I heard Dr. Williamson a couple of times talk about turnaround. Part of the plan is to augment the resources available from DPI to help schools turn around, to help districts turn around. And then we also want to focus on early education and childcare. Judge Manning, early on in the case, realized that pre-kindergarten education, early education, was just as important as grades K through 12. And for at-risk students in particular, those early years are really important. So part of the plan of making that opportunity available is to supplement some more early educational opportunities. And then another part of the plan focuses on college and career readiness. That is the focus of this board and of DPI and the state board. And it's, when you think about the definition of sound, basic education, if it's one that's going to enable students to see and eat, right, in the economy and in secondary education, college and career readiness also has to be included in the plan. It is built in. There we go. Year three continues, again, along the same line, with teachers, principals, and resources. Here's the, here's the dollars that we're talking about. And again, this is for the statewide plan. This is what the state of North Carolina, if you cost it out, and came up with and presented to the court, to the dollars that it would cost in addition to the current level of education funding to implement these steps. I'm sure I keep getting the wrong button. There we go. Same thing for, and for year, for year three, the dollars needed to implement. And then you'll see at the end, the court order delta. Again, this is the amount of funding that even after a budget was passed in 2021, the legislature still did not fully fund all the action items. And so there is six or $700 million yet to be funded. Now, this is Dr. Williamson's favorite slide right here. This is, so the plan is an eight-year plan. Year one sort of got interrupted by COVID, has sort of been rolled into years two and three. But it's an eight-year plan, and over the course of that eight years, this is the funding that is estimated would flow to Robinson County. And if you just look, you know, percentage-wise, the increase in the percentage of the funding for these various programs, which include, you know, again, teaching positions, teaching assistants, other positions and programs. It's, as Dr. Williamson and I said earlier this evening, it's real money over the course of eight years and intended to be, you know, transformational. And the Supreme Court held that this is the only plan that the state has presented. This is the plan that is in place. This is the plan that was ordered to be implemented. And while the money's not flowing yet, until the Supreme Court tells you all otherwise, this is the funding that Robinson County should expect to flow from the Leandro Comprehensive Remedial Plan. So what happens next? If only it were that easy, that we have our judgment, and the state's going to start sending money and implementing the plan. Again, it will go, the case will now go back to the trial court for any, again, mathematical adjustments that need to be made based on last summer's adjustment to the budget. And then according to the Supreme Court, the state officials will be ordered to transfer those funds. Now, there have already been some procedural changes in the case. Again, you may have heard last week that we have a new judge on the case. I think that's probably an intentional move to assign it to a new judge. It's Judge Ammons. He sits in Cumberland County. Cumberland's one of the plaintiff counties. So we're hopeful for that. But he doesn't have the long history with the case that the other judges have had. Again, there are also some procedural and practical issues involved in getting this funding. Again, technically, we are, you know, in the plan right now. You all know very well that the fiscal year ends June 30th. And so what does that look like in terms of the funding and the implementation of the plan? And the last thing I would say is that this does remain an active litigation. We continue to advocate on behalf of Robinson County and the children of Robinson County, who, again, are entitled to and deserve these resources and deserve this opportunity for a constitutional education. But it continues. And happy to continue to fight on your behalf and on behalf of the children. And with Dr. Williamson's help, he's been key in this case, not from the very, very beginning, but for a number of, a number of years. And we are always available to answer questions that any of you may have, that any of the cabinet may have about what's going on. But long story short, congratulations, you won, and stay tuned. And I'm happy to answer any questions that anyone might have this evening. Thank you all again for the opportunity to come talk to you this evening.
Thank you.
Melanie, again, on behalf of Public Schools of Robinson County, thank you so much for your work over the years, and we'll be constantly in the fight to, when we get the funds that our kids deserve. Thank you so much for your work and effort.
Next on agenda is the local AIG, AIG Plan Review. Dr. Carr?
Good evening, Chairman Simmons, Superintendent Williams, and Cabinet members. I'm going to yield to Mr. Davis to share information and updates about our AIG Plan Review.
Turn your mic on. There you go.
May I?
Yes, go ahead.
I noticed there were about 45 components. And out of the 45, we made, they made clear, our district made clear when it was reviewed on about 43 of them, or 42 of them. And the ones that they did not make clear on, that it was dealing with using the standard course study to differentiate, and also the other one was having one-on-one with the parents. How are you going to have a one-on-one partnership with parents? That was another one not clear. And the middle one was working also differentiated instruction with AIG's children. That was another one not clear. So from my perspective, I think you should be commended on doing so well with the plan, having 43 components that you made clear and was applauded by the state. If you notice the first statement, the overall plan is well-written and comprehensive. This shows a renewed commitment to certain AIG students of the district. NCDPI commends your efforts. So that was a plus out of 45, 42 or so that they commended. From my perspective, those that were not clear, I'd like to hear you address those of what you're doing to address those that we didn't get a clear, clear rating on. If that's all right with the superintendent and the chair.
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, ma'am. Good evening, Chairman Simmons, Superintendent Dr. Williamson, esteemed board members and cabinet. Yes, we have conducted our final review of the local AIG plan and did receive feedback from the North Carolina Department of Public Instruction. I am here to say, and pleased to say, that we have completed it. And from the Department of Public Construction's format, complete means satisfactory, and that we do not have to submit any revisions to the state. So I commend Ms. Valerie Hammonds and our AIG team for their work and their efforts on this plan. They did an excellent job. So right now, I just want to take you through a little bit to kind of highlight and identify some initiatives. If you'll turn to the next slide. And then the next one. And then one more. So to answer your question, Dr. Manuel, suggestions for the partially evident practices are going to include resources used in the ninth through 12th grade with advanced courses. We'll be describing intentional strategies used to retain AIG licensed professionals, including those of diverse backgrounds. We will also be describing our efforts to include internal stakeholders, external partners, and parents to provide input and assist with developing and revising and monitoring the plan. We will also include the process and procedures that parents and guardians will follow for accelerated opportunities within our acceleration policy for subject grades and high school opportunities. Yes, ma'am.
Got me. Clarification. It said in the plan that you did really, really well with RCC, UNCP, but what they found that was not clear, how are you going to do better with making partnerships with parents and guardians? That's, I guess that's what, the one thing I was trying to hit on was that one.
Yes, ma'am. And this, and some of our evident practices that we are going to suggest that we include and go more deeper on are those processes and procedures for parents and guardians. So to allow them with accelerated opportunities to have input in stakeholders for our opportunities in both the high school and the primaries grades, to bring them in, have more conversations.
Can I ask you the next question? And then that will save us some time, because I think you've done an excellent job, the system, with this review. All right, the next one, how are you going to use the standard course study to different, meet the different needs of students, differentiate for diverse students? I mean, you could, you could just talk. You don't have to use your plan.
Yeah, if you go to the next slide, please, Mr. Cole. And so what we'll do is we're going to monitor our demographics and our students. And we're also going to use formative and summative assessments for those. And we're going to be able to incorporate that with a differentiation. And in our new, in our new platforms for EL and Eureka, we have those differentiation components that we did not have last year. So we'll be able to utilize those as well to be able to bring them in, to actually be able to test and bring more candidates in for our program.
And I was really proud that they didn't cite us for, you know, not the equity thing, not going in and having, giving everybody a chance to be in the AIG program that qualified. I'm glad they didn't cite us for that. I think for me, you've answered the things that were not clear in the plan. I mean,
Thank you, ma'am.
You can present. If anyone else needs you to present, you can. But that was my point, the things that were unclear.
Well, the last thing I would want to bring up, if you'll go to the last slide. To answer your question about bringing in those other demographics, I am pleased to say that from our newly identified students from last year, we have doubled our enrollment. And so we went from 126 to 268 new identified AIG students with an increase of 142 students this year.
Ms. Ocean?
And the follow-up, Dr. Manuel, I'd like to commend you both, all, your entire department and what you're doing with the AIG program. And the increase, I am proud to say includes my daughter. She was in, they got her little yesterday. So I'm going to be one of those parents. So what I want to know is, as far as acceleration programs, like will the AIG teacher at the building lever, level, espound on that? What is the acceleration program, and how would grades K through five identify and/or fit into that, to that program?
With, well, with the K four, we'll still be remaining with that pullout, and we'll advance that acceleration program that's been given to us, the state. advance that acceleration program that has been given to us, the state, uh, who are going to pull out for fourth through eight. I do have my lead teacher here, if I can bring her up as well, and she can actually expound more from the building level.
Okay.
And to kind of give you some more updates on that.
Mr. Terry.
Thank you, Mr. Davis, for, um, your presentation and I, um, applaud your work as well. Would it be, um.
Mr. Terry.
Hold on, let I answer Ms. Ocean's question, then we'll come back to you.
Okay, could you restate the question, please?
Yes ma'am, I'm sorry. As far as the acceleration program, how does that, um, relate to grades K through four? My daughter is a fourth grader, so when you say acceleration program and it's going to increase, what, how does that apply to her? What, how are they going to accelerate or what's that, what does that program look like?
Okay, so for right now, K through three is pullout.
Okay.
Um, and then fourth grade, most of the fourth grade classes are blocked. So we are going into those classrooms. When we initiated this plan, um, it was to accentuate what teachers were already doing. So now that we have this new curriculum, we are just going in and helping students with that. So we're in a year of transition as well and trying to navigate through all the changes that everyone is experiencing. So Mr. Davis and I had that conversation today or yesterday, that there's just some things that we need to, a pinpoint, what we need to improve. Um, but as far as the acceleration, right now, we're just focusing on working with the children, with the curriculum that they're working on now. Because when we go in these classrooms from just my personal experience, um, the curriculum is very challenging. And right now is like doing extra things, we're not really focused on that. We're just trying to get through this year with all these changes and see what we need to improve on.
Thank you.
With that grade level.
That works for me.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Terry, I appreciate all your hard work on this. It looks like, based on the letter, that this is something, this review takes place every three years?
Yes.
Okay, so, um, the presentation indicated like what we were going to do, uh, to work toward, um, fixing the issues that we were sort of dinged on. Uh, what kind of timeline could we look at, uh, to say, well, after X number of months, we'd like for you to come back and give us a status update on what we're actually doing to, to address these things and the progress of how it looks, so that we can, um, you know, have a perfect score the next time they come around. So if it's, if this is done every three years, what, what would be an appropriate timeline for us to sit, for you to come back and, and report back to us on, on the progress?
Um, I would say, uh, right now, towards the end of the year. So what we're doing, also what we've added in the plan, so we will give annual, um, surveys to parents, students, teachers, administrators. And also I attend the regional meetings and I get a lot of ideas from surrounding regions. So those things that we need to work on that were highlighted, um, I will be discussing those things with them. And I, I do that on behalf of Mr. Davis. So, uh, you know, it, we, we made a lot of changes this year. Um, and, uh, some of those things, I think they just want more detail with the explanations. Um, so I would say at least till the end of the year. And then just moving forward with the other things, we could wait.
Terry, and if I may follow up on that, a couple of marks from now, we're going to spend more time and present to you our Cognia Plan for District-Wide Accreditation, which again is a five-year accreditation, two and a half years into that, there is a review. Um, we're also working in creating our strategic plan, which we've identified these issues as part of that. And so we're integrating it all with one effort for equity. So there will be, um, check-ins along the way and an official one, two and a half years into the five-year accreditation district-wide. So, yeah.
Mr. Gentry.
With, uh, the, the regular curriculum, uh, typically for those, uh, areas that are subject to statewide, uh, objective testing, and of course, I realize we're talking about accelerated curriculum here, uh, and educate me a little bit here in terms of the, uh, the standards for, uh, testing or evaluation. And, and I did see, uh, uh, a point that addressed, uh, active or tactical demonstrations and learning. Uh, it will more emphasis be placed on that type of evaluation as opposed to standardized objective, uh, testing with the curriculum.
Are, are you talking about specifically just AIG students?
Yes.
Okay. Um, as far as testing, I mean, they, they're going to be doing the testing that everyone else does. Our testing has not changed. Um, we will be giving a screener this year, and that is a non-verbal screener, and that was an equity piece. Um, because of the demographics of our county, we wanted to use a non-verbal screener. So if there are any language barriers, those students will not be counted out. So that will be given in second grade this year. And so the score, if they make a, a score of eighty-five percent or above, that score will be used as an aptitude score when they go into third grade. So if they meet the other criteria, they will be placed into AIG. Does that, does that answer your question?
What I was thinking about was the, the implementation of the curriculum itself. Uh, well, you know, kinesthetic, kinesthetic, practical type evaluations, uh, of student activities and learning as opposed to, you know, sitting down and choosing A, B, C, D on a standardized test. Is this part of the objective, uh, ongoing with the curriculum?
Yes.
Okay. That, that's all I need to know.
Okay.
And Mr. Gentry, let me say that all of our curriculum now is not just A, B, C, D. So it is a lot of writing and presenting. So there's a huge shift in that formative assessment where they're taking and applying what they're learning to what they're trying to, um, do in real life. Creating blogs, doing all sorts of things, watching students present. So it's a very different type of assessment of how we, um, really look at what students are capable of doing.
Sheriff, if I may, very quickly, and then Ms. Ocean, to your question, um, we all want to provide that updated, uh, reading, the extended, and the summer as part of that ongoing. And then Andrew, if you talk about, um, School of Math and Science, why are we affiliating with School of Math and Science again, as an opportunity to address some AIG needs that we have?
And so with our new partnership with the School of Math and Science, we're going to be able to bring in them free of cost. Um, this is going to open up the doors for honors classes, AP classes, and aeronomalous engineering, biochemistry, biomedical. We're also going to have a partnership with some of the primary grades where they're going to provide summer camps as well with fifth, sixth, seventh, and eighth grade. This is going to be during the school day for the high school students, so that they can actually take the course and be immersed and enrolled into that course with that North Carolina Math, a School and Science, with that teacher from there. So they'll send the kits, they'll send everything that they need. And this is going to also address the equity piece when it comes to our AP and our honors classes, that we're going to be able to provide more higher rigor courses through that AP platform, not honors platform. And so we are excited to partner with the School of Science and Math. They were actually identified as the number one public high school in the country. And so this is a wonderful opportunity for us.
Mr. Curry.
Um, and, and I'd heard some information about that and I'm just going to go back. The, the AP part on the high school level, where we can't teach an AP class, um, at a high school because you only got five kids wanting the class. And where if we get all, just going through the North Carolina School of Science and Math, then all these kids at different schools will be able to do that. And my question is, and I'm not saying if it's this year and I'm going to go back to the smaller kids, just said that the number of students has risen greatly with our AIG. Okay, this year or next fall, are we looking at increasing the number of teachers that we have in AIG? Um, and if you could address it for what might happen now, or what could happen in the fall as far as us having actually AIG teachers, you know, on our campuses?
Yes, sir. We actually were privileged to bring on two last year, um, which we're actually being put in. So we've got two new allotments, um, with our numbers increasing. I'm, I'm encouraged and I'm, I'm hopeful for another allotment or two, so that we can expound that, so we can at least have an AIG teacher at a school at least two days a week. That's our goal. Um, I think that would help out tremendously because that relationship piece with a AIG teacher and those students is extremely important. And so that's our goal. So if we could at least get an AIG teacher in at least two schools every week, which would be looking at bringing in possibly two more added, um, that would help us.
I, I think so too, because that's, that's been one of our, the criticisms we've received sometime is not having enough of those teachers there, or they're spread out so thin with the number of students they have to deal with.
Thanks, yes sir.
Sheriff, if I may, and our first option would be, and Ms. Thompson speak to this, probably in partnership with UNCP to add that certification, um, which would increase that opportunity. Alyssa, do we have that partnership, um, or we can? Because that would certainly increase, um, number of teachers available to teach AIG courses.
Ms. Austin.
Yes, sir, that is correct. We work closely with UNCP and we have, um, some teachers right now that have reached out and are actually going through that program to add the AIG certification to their license.
Any other questions? All right, thank you all.
Next agenda is, uh, the naming of the football field by, uh, Director, Mr. Ron Hunt. He also will be doing the, uh, presentation of the Red Springs High School Complex Ribbon Cutting.
Good evening, Chairman Simmons, Superintendent Dr. Williamson, Board members. I'm here tonight on behalf of Red Springs High School Principal, Jamal Campbell, Athletic Director Glenn Patterson, and the Red Springs community. I'm here to present a nomination form and proposal for naming the new football stadium at the Red Springs Athletic Complex, Mike Smith Stadium. Mike graduated from Red Springs High School in nineteen seventy-six and was a star athlete during his time there. Mike served on the school board for over thirty years. During his time, he served as chairman, uh, leader of multiple committees, and Mike has also been very involved in, in the community, serving as, on various civic groups. Mike has demonstrated exemplary leadership and serves as a positive role model for members of the community and students. Mike is always present to support students at athletic events and provides positive and uplift and feedback to our students. Mike is well-respected in the community due to his character and only wants the best for the Red Springs community. Finally, Mike has been a tireless supporter to ensure that the Red Springs High School Athletic Complex was built and had all it needed to be a premier complex for our region. Without Mike's support and effort, we're not sure the complex would have existed today. Let me just say, uh, we, we all know Mike personally, and naming this stadium would be a great honor for him. I support this nomination one hundred percent, and I hope you do also. Uh, for the second part of this process, we have scheduled a public forum on January the eighteenth at five o'clock in the Red Springs High School cafeteria. After the forum, I'll come back at the February meeting, um, where this will now become an action item, um, for you to vote on. I can answer any questions for you.
Mr. Terry.
So just so I'm clear, I'm clear in my mind on the process, because wording, you know, the way that we word things is important. Um, I, I reread the policy today and I, I'm glad that we've already got the, uh, the town hall scheduled. So based on my understanding of this process, um, as a board, we're essentially voting to say, uh, our nominee for, uh, naming this facility is Mr. Mike. So at this point, we're essentially saying that we support, uh, Mr. Mike as a nominee. And then we'll have the town hall and come back and vote, and then it'll be done, right?
Yes, sir.
So at this point, Mr. Mike is our, is the board's nominee. Um, but procedurally, um, I think, I'm one hundred, one hundred percent for Mr. Mike. Uh, let me start by saying that, I'm for him, one hundred percent in support. But I want to make, make sure that we're clear that we're proposing his name, then we're going to have the town hall, then we'll come back and vote. I don't want the citizens of Red Springs not to attend the town hall because it's, because maybe in the paper it says that we voted for this facility being named after him. Everybody needs to know that it's not a done deal until after the town hall. So I want to make sure that, 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 that information is clear.
Yes, sir, that's correct. It's not a done deal until we come back and it's an action item and then it's presented and then the board votes on it.
I would like for us to really rethink the process, this process, because I, in my mind, I feel that the town hall should be done first, and then the names that are proposed should be brought for us to vote on one time, because it seems like that we are saying, okay, it's going to be Mr. Mike. And if somebody's not very careful or very keen on this process, they're going to assume that it's a done deal. So I would like for us to rethink how we, we handle these things. Have a town hall first, get the names, come back here and, and let's, um, let's discuss them, if it's a possibility. I appreciate you. And like I said, I'm a hundred percent in favor of Mr. Mike. Thank you.
Yes, sir. Any other questions?
Ms. Ocean.
Okay, so my question would be, are there any other candidates or nominees for this, for this, uh, position? And once we have the town hall, would the, would the stakeholders be given, uh, given a chance to nominate others or is this, I mean, is this our stance?
At this time, there are no other nominations. And this nomination, it, it comes from the principal, uh, the advisory board, the school advisory board, the booster club, folks in the community. And then it's, it's brought to me on the nomination form. I talk to Dr. Williamson, then we decide whether to bring it to you as a, as a board. But at this time, there are no other nominations.
Okay.
Once we have the town hall, I'm not aware of any time that we've had a town hall that another nomination has been brought up. I'm sure that it could be brought up.
Thank you.
Mr. Curry.
Yes, thank you. Uh, just to follow up, uh, Mr. Rome, you more or less answered it. This all came to you from this very, various entities, principal, booster club. And if I'm not mistaken, anytime something is named, it starts from the community as far as, if it's principal, booster club, whoever it might be, I think we did the soccer field and what we did for Mr. Baker. It started from that area of the community. And you bring it here, which now, there's nothing for us to vote on tonight, because this is information, so there's nothing we vote on. They have the meeting and then again, I guess if another name is brought up, then it is taken into consideration at that time.
Yes, sir.
So, uh, but I'm like Mr. Terry, and I do want to make clear, not just say Red Springs, but any area that is not, that we're doing this. This is being done by that community or any said community that so desires, uh, something being named and there is a procedure and this is the procedure we followed. Now, if we choose to change that procedure later on, but this is consistent, what we did with the soccer field and, uh, and also what we did with Mr. Baker too.
Yes, sir, and, and this is the procedure that Mr. Grady Hunt, you know, told us that we had to follow. Uh, but now, Mr. Terry, that, that is a great idea, you know, to have the town hall first, and I think that's a great idea. But this is the procedure that Mr. Grady told us to, to follow.
Mr. Terry.
I'm sort of in a pickle. That's the reason I brought this up. I'm sort of in a pickle because I would like to, uh, propose a, a name for the gym at Prospect School, but there's been a couple of different names brought to me. So how, how could I bring two names to the board when this is, you know what I mean? When this is our procedure? I think the town hall should be done first and then the names brought here. So I appreciate you, um, under, I appreciate you, uh, understanding and, um, saying that about the idea, Mr. Jerome, thank you.
Yes, sir.
You want to help?
Okay, moving on to the, uh, Red Springs High School Athletic, uh, Ribbon Cutting Ceremony. So Red Springs High School officially opened a new athletic complex on January the twenty-first at eleven AM, which is a Saturday, uh, with a ribbon cutting ceremony. Um, you should have the flyer of the ceremony there in front of you at your table. Um, but we would like to invite all of you, as well as the public. But we would like to invite all of you, as well as the public, to come join us in a celebration. Principal Jamal Campbell has put together a short program for the ceremony, and we will have the complex open for the public to tour. We'll ask Mrs. Jessica Horn to make sure to get the word out to the public through our Robesonian, the website, and all of our social media outlets. The rain date for this would be the following Saturday, January the 28th at 11:00 a.m. I can answer any questions.
Anybody got any questions? Okay.
Thank you.
Next, I want to do the public comment. We only have one name, Mr. Jeff McNeil. Jeff McNeil. Okay, he's not here. Action item, I'm sorry. Oh, action item, Mr. McQueen will be filling in for Mr. Erica Sess on our month reports.
Good evening, Chairman Simmons, Superintendent Dr. Williamson, board members. Before you, it's the December monthly financial report.
Go ahead, Mr. Lawson.
Ms. Erica, it's sent this out to you, and if everybody's looked at it, I want to make a motion to approve.
Got a motion by Mr. Lawson, our chair, seconded by Mr. Leach. All in favor, we're saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passed. Thank you, Mr. McQueen.
Get well, Ms. Erica.
All right, Mr. Lawson.
I move that the Board of Education for the Public Schools of Robinson County go into closed session for the purpose of discussing certified and classified personnel, North Carolina Jones Statute 143-318.11A1 and 6, and then consort with the attorney retained by the board in order to preserve the attorney-client privilege between the attorney and the Board of Education for the Public Schools of Robinson County, North Carolina Jones Statute 143-318.11A1 and 3.
Second. Okay, you got a motion going into closed session by Mr. Lawson, seconded by Mr. Brew. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Go ahead, in closed session.
Make a motion to come out of closed session?
Got a motion made to come out of closed session by Mr. Lawson, second by Ms. Leach. All in favor, say an aye. All opposed? All opposed? Motion passed. Motion to approve the certified classified personnel.
If I may, you need to remove Mr. Brave Boy from the list. Right, that's the point you were checking. He's listed here, and the action that's listed here is not one the board's going to take, as I understand it, so...
Yes, that's all I'm going to say. Approved personnel as amended, classified or certified as amended.
Got a motion made by Ms. Leach to prove personnel as it has been amended, second by Mr. Lawson. All in favor? Say an aye. All opposed? I was having a motion to approve the closed session minutes. Mr. Brewer, turn your microphone.
Second.
Turn your... Thank you. Got a motion to approve the closed session minutes by Mr. Gentry, second by Mr. Brewer. All in favor, say an aye. All opposed? Motion passed. That's it? Motion to... Got a motion adjourned by Mr. Lawson. Oh, I'm sorry. Dr. Maney?
Mr. Chair, Mrs. Superintendent, I'd like to request that Dr. Carr or whomever scheduled our curriculum meeting that we canceled earlier. And I don't know a date, so that would be up to you guys to let us know. And the time that's convenient for, I think mostly everyone would like to attend, hopefully.
We will get you a date and time.
Beg pardon?
We will work with you to get a date and time.
Well, I think it would be considerate that these people that are working, because I don't know the best time for you ladies and gentlemen that are working. There's some times out, so Mr. Lawson, Ms. Ocean, see, you work from home, don't you? So would any time be okay for you? At the four? Would you consider that, that time?
Yes.
Maybe five, five o'clock, that'd give everybody time to...
Will five o'clock work for everybody? We'll share some dates to see which one works best.
I appreciate that consideration.
We would also like to add that the policy meeting, we will have a policy meeting February the 2nd at nine o'clock. We will send an invite out to the Policy Committee. And those are basically just updates to the new policy. There are no revisions, all of these are updates.
Anyone else? Had a motion adjourned by Mr. Lawson and second by, I forgot who was, Ms. Ocean. All in favor, say an aye. All opposed? We'll adjourn.